Objection to item one, that's public participation. This is the portion of the meeting that we invite people from the public, if they have any questions or comments, to address the committee. And while it's not something we can discuss substantively or vote on during that meeting, we can certainly put on a future agenda if appropriate. Anybody present wish to address the committee? Hearing nobody. Moving on to item, well, item one, acceptance of minutes for June 15. These were emailed out. Does anybody have any questions, comments, changes? And if not, is there a motion? I will abstain from voting. I did watch the meeting, but I wasn't present, so I'll abstain from voting on the minutes.
And we've drifted away.
Great. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
Just, just on our agenda, only because we keep the agenda, it is June 15th, the meeting instead of June 14th.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's right, we changed it.
Good catch. So note, agenda item number one should read June 15th and not June 14th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So a motion made, seconded, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
We have Heidi on.
And Armando.
And Armando.
Oh, then we have to poll.
Well, neither can vote on the minutes, they weren't, Heidi wasn't here.
Right.
And.
Armando's not a voting member of that.
And TJ abstaining.
Yeah, abstaining, but actually for the record, if we can go back to the beginning and take a poll of who is in attendance remotely.
Okay, so we, we have Heidi Perkins. And Armando, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. And then Courtney's on there, but not, obviously she's in. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Heidi's the only voting member that we have?
Yeah, Heidi's a voting member. But I'm sure Heidi, you abstained because you didn't, weren't here last month, so.
Thank you.
Did the school committee post this meeting?
Katie.
Oh, good, okay.
Katie abstained as well. She was not here.
Okay, good. Well, then, actually, let me kick over to the school committee chair. If this is a joint meeting, I don't wanna, I wasn't aware of that, my apologies. Please.
All right. Like to call us to order, all present, myself, Lindsay, and Armando.
Do we need to do anything else? Okay.
Sorry about that. Boy, and I saw the agenda too, and I missed that.
I'm blaming Dom to Barry.
Yeah.
All right.
Do it after I leave, too.
So item two on the agenda is the vendor invoice package of June 2023 that was emailed out. And if anyone hasn't seen the invoices, we can certainly pass those around, there is a breakdown and approval sheet that we pass around. Dom, can you?
We just have invoice for Vertex for their services for the month of June for the amount of $13,879. We have DRA's invoice for the feasibility study and their work out in the field for $27,300. And then we have additionally, we signed up for lead under, under DRA, and that is the amount of $1,552.50 for a total, and my eyes are going, of $42,731.50.
Great. Is there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the invoices as stated on the invoice approval sheet in the total amount of $42,731.50? Second, motion made, seconded, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, online, Heidi?
Aye, I'm sorry, I can't hear that one. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, yes, we can.
Okay, great, thanks.
I'm gonna pass this down to Diane, and then if you don't mind, I did put your name on there?
You did.
No, no, it's on there.
You did.
I did.
Thank you, Dom.
I'm sorry. It only went here.
Heidi and Armando, can you see the screen?
TJ, is that the one we should be signing on?
I think there were two of them, and I signed one that Dom said was extra.
There's two, yeah. I'm not sure why we did it that way in the high school, because I think one went up to the finance, and then one went to bill at town hall for their records, that's all.
So do we all need to sign two, or is one enough? Or, I only signed one, that's why I ask.
There's one went this way and one went that way.
There was a time we were all signing individual ones because of being distant, so I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Since this project started, we've only done one. Only one.
Well, I can take the two of them. If you give that to Diane, I can just attach it, the one she just signed.
No worries.
And Jo, I think, in fact, if you give it to Joyce, just give it to Joyce.
Thank you.
So on our agenda, we're up to item number four, preferred option, final, do we, well, for all intents and purposes, this is a joint meeting, so Catherine, you can take over.
I wasn't prepared to take over, but.
No, no, I'll go ahead, though. Actually, I was gonna toss it to Carl, Dom, and Courtney.
Yes, that sounds good. I know, I can do that.
Well, you all have seen the schedule before, and we know where we're headed in terms of tonight's vote on the, ooh, on the preferred option, as well as the school committee's charge in looking at the enrollment. What we did, just as a snapshot, so you could see what we've been up to on the design team side, is we've identified some of the tasks that have been ongoing while, while we've been presenting everything. We did get the survey back, which we'll go back over a little bit later during this meeting. We, there are a little bit of, there's new information that we didn't have before in terms of the contours and some site utilities that we'll share with you. We're also gonna start working on geotechnical exploration pretty soon, and hazmat exploration. After, because of the additional services that were approved, we're able to continue with those at this point. And all of this is headed towards getting cost and packages put together for cost estimators to start looking at. So on July 24th, we'll be handing over our documents to them, and they'll start looking at our drawings, our outline specifications for all the options, including the base repair option, add reno, and all the three new construction options for both enrollments. So that's gonna be ongoing starting July 24th, and then we'll have something to bring to you in the August building committee meeting in terms of pricing.
And Vertex will run also estimates at the same time.
Right, there'll be two cost estimators to make sure that, you know, we're on par in terms of pricing. Oh, one other thing is we are gonna start meeting with various town departments, so meeting with engineering, we're gonna start looking, talking with DPW and public safety as well. All of those conversations are gonna be starting this month. So these are the options that we will be estimating and pricing that I mentioned before. We had done some previous pricing during the PDP phase, very high level pricing, looking at ranges of, for each of these options. You do have this information, it is available to you already from the previous presentations. Looking at the addition renovation, I guess we could go through each of these plans, or we could focus on the, you know.
I think we can focus on the one that's risen to the top and kind of make it official tonight. We're, we've heard discussions, we've gotten feedback on the evaluation matrix, it certainly seems nearly unanimous, I think, from the evaluations to date, that the pinwheel plan on the line lumber site is the preferred option. So we thought we'd just spend a moment just to make that official and to sort of take you through the plans, if we have those again, Courtney. Just so everyone understands what we're talking about. And again, these are very conceptual in nature still, it doesn't mean that this is what the building's gonna look like, you know, a year from now or something, when design is, you know, much more advanced, but, and the plan is drawn for the larger enrollment, we should just make that clear, even though we understand that's the school committee's ultimate decision. But from a feasibility point of view, we obviously want to make sure that the larger one fits on the site and works, and once we satisfy ourselves, then we know the smaller footprint would, would work. And we can show you how that's achieved, too, but, so it's a three-story building, as we said, and the reason it's called a pinwheel, because there are basically sort of four legs to it in various shapes. Two of the legs are classroom wings, really kind of these classroom neighborhoods, smaller learning communities, that are made up of the full-size classrooms, which are in blue, the special ed, which are in sort of the greenish color there, and then smaller spaces, as well as the teacher planning room located strategically at the junction between those wings. So it really reflects the, the ed plan desire, where each one of those on the, on each floor represents a grade. And we know that's not always, you know, the way it works, but that's sort of the ideal. Populations do fluctuate a little bit from year to year, but on the first floor would be kindergarten and first grade, second and third, fourth and fifth. So it's kind of a nice metaphor, as you advance in your career, you move up in the building as well. And it kind of centers around the learning commons. It's, this area really shown in yellow here, but the actual square footage of it is this, but this is all kind of an open area, so that it's a way of being efficient with square footage, but we're kind of stealing that, that space, which is for circulation, and making it part of the open learning commons there. So there's still bookcases, there's still some enclosed rooms, you can still get some quiet areas, but it is an open area at the center of the plan, and really becomes kind of the heart of the school. We also, and it's directly, you know, opposite the entrance, the entrance is here. For those who may remember the plan, we've actually flipped it through the miracles of computers, it's fairly easy now to flip things 180 degrees, because it works better on the site, we'll show that in a moment. But, so this is still the entrance here, the parking is assumed to be to the right here, coming in immediately adjacent to administration, and then your enter, and the learning commons is that open space, it would be a double-height space, maybe even a triple-height space, but for code reasons, we probably don't want it to be open to the third floor, because that's a different building code classification, and you need exhaust fans and makeup air, and it gets more expensive, kind of unnecessarily. But we can still bring light in from above, as well as, you know, there's light coming in at the, at the first floor and second floor levels, too, we'll show you in the massing diagram. So it can be, even though it's central, it can still get a lot of outside natural light, which is a nice, obviously welcoming kind of space. So then there are the two classroom neighborhood wings, the other wing of the building, you might say, is the public wing of the building, which has the assembly spaces of the gym, gymnasium, and the cafeteria. So the building could be closed off at this point, and those spaces opened after hours there. They're basically tall, double-height spaces, but only one story, there's nothing on top of those spaces there, and they, they could have a dedicated entrance, too, from the parking, directly into those, and there'd be, you know, some restrooms available for the public, and it could function after hours. And obviously, with this kind of plan, too, the way it sits on the site has great indoor-outdoor kind of connections and relationships. Here's the cafeteria, right up here could be a nice paved play area for recess, you know, right here, both of these classroom wings are kind of containing, framing, an outdoor area there, whether it's an outdoor classroom or an active play area. The kindergarten rooms being located here could have a play area directly outside of their spaces as well, so there's a lot of good opportunity for indoor-outdoor connections, and obviously having this much exterior also is great for natural light, we can have windows everywhere in every educational space. There are very few, you know, internal spaces, they're really very limited to maybe a few offices or, or things like that, otherwise every space has access to views and, and natural light. And the second and third floor obviously stack, you know, on top of that, repeat the classroom neighborhoods. The, the other aspect is, on the second floor above the learning commons, is the, is the STEM space, kind of overlooking the learning commons below, kind of the maker space of the building, you might say. Again, centrally located, so it's easy to, to access. And on the third floor, there might be additional sped spaces and sped offices up there, too, so that the adults are kind of distributed in the building, all the administration isn't just down on the, on the first floor. The other thing, too, that, that we wanted to point out is, in these wings, we typically locate the sped rooms, even though there's, there's one full-size one on each classroom, but they're located towards the center of the building. So there are times we would anticipate students from another grade are coming to that space, and we wouldn't want them to have to go through the whole, you know, to get to a room at this end of it, for instance, they only have to go that far. And these plans were updated with the three additional RISE program rooms, the higher functioning autism spectrum students, sorry.
Let me go back real quick, I was just, you went to the RISE.
Oh, okay.
So.
That we incorporate that in.
Yep. And then the PT adaptive, like the adaptive PT.
Oh, yes, yeah, off of the gym, we've added that physical therapy area, too, there, so that, that's in the program now. So every space is more or less accounted for, you know, we don't show every office in the admin area, or some of the breakdowns of some of these smaller rooms, but the overall square footage, net square footage for each department is there and accounted for. Maybe we can show the massing diagram?
Yeah.
So, so here's a very crude but basic kind of massing diagram of how the, the building would look. This is looking at the, the entrance side of it, the, the gym, the cafeteria here, those are the three-story classroom wings there, the parking lot would be here to the right. So the main entrance is on one side, the auxiliary gym entrance is on the other side, that entrance could be a porch-like, you know, so it's a, a scale that's friendly to little kids, and more, you might say, residential perhaps, could be a nice plaza, could be a garden in, in front there. And it allows drop-off from both a separate bus drop-off and a separate car drop-off, you know, with, with access. So the buses are on one side, directly off of, this is Fano Drive here, and then the cars have a nice long queuing area around the parking lot, too, so that for all those parents that show up early and start queuing up, there's, there's a good long driveway there without blocking the, the buses coming and going. But you can see, too, because of this little porch, we, we can have some upper clear-story windows to bring light into that commons area, which is located in here, and we could actually have some windows way at the top, too, that bring. And we could actually have some windows way at the top too that bring light down from those areas. And that could be a roof deck too, on that third floor level where you can walk out and kind of be contained here. But, yeah, and here's sort of upper clear-story windows. We show hints of that happening here too in those, you know, each of those classroom neighborhoods are not just a straight corridor, they're widened and the idea is that there's some collaborative breakout areas there. We, you know, could use a sloped roof with, these are called clear-story windows. So, they work better than skylights, they don't leak as much because the glass isn't facing the sky, the glass is vertical like a window and brings light in. And so, that could bring some light into those collaborative areas in each neighborhood. Again, just very basic, just showing how the components go together. We could probably go through the larger site plan too, just to... So, this is a quick site sketch as to how it fits on the line lumber site. Park Street is here. The entrance we're showing is utilizing Fano Drive. It makes the most sense, it's already cleared, it's an old railroad right-of-way, actually, we've discovered. It's graded, it already has a wetland crossing here, a pipe culvert and so forth. So, it's sort of environmentally the right way to go. These hatched areas are wetlands here. So, the town's property currently is right here. And so, most all the frontage the town currently owns on Park Street is all wetland. And it would be a significant impact to bring the driveway at that point. So, this makes more sense. And it has the basic principles we've talked about, a separate car drop-off, you know, kind of a big one-way loop here, a separate bus drop-off in its own route, a separate service access to the kitchen in the back of the building, a fire lane around the building there. And then, as we said, various opportunities for outdoor play and both paved play, play structures, outdoor classrooms, and trying to keep it as compact as possible so that we are not, you know, utilizing the entire site. We do reserve a significant amount of it for future development. We're also showing, we're discussing how large this athletic field should be. This right here is sort of a 150-foot by 225-foot, you might call it a junior soccer field. It's not necessarily adult-sized. If we wanted to do an adult-sized one, we'd run it this way. This is the flattest portion of the site and it makes sense for athletic fields to be here. So, we're discussing exactly how much. For comparison, this little league field that's shown there is the current South field for size comparison. So, clearly, if the larger school is the one that's preferred, we have, you know, over 500 kids, 600 kids, we may need a larger field. But, it clearly, you know, takes away from future development area. It's a little more clearing of trees and so forth, but certainly could fit in that location. And it's in a way that, you know, there's parking adjacent to it. So, it supports the idea that it's a community resource. And we're showing, you know, a potential future drive to access that undeveloped land there as well. Oh, we got Joyce's garage right here. To have some vehicles to help maintain the property and other properties too, I guess. And a little covered pavilion area too, just so we have some shade out there. One of the things, as Courtney mentioned, you know, and now that we have the survey with much more precise topographic contours, we know that the building, you know, is spanning, you know, an area of ground that's not flat here. It will require some cut here, some lowering of the ground here, some filling of the ground here to find kind of a happy medium for where the first floor should be and still work, you know, connecting back to the existing grades on Fano Drive.
Will it kind of offset each other?
That's always a... Sometimes it's not, it's not exactly the quantities, you want to get equal because the cutting up here might be rock and the filling here might be cheaper. So, we may actually choose to cut less and fill more because we want to balance the cost, not just the quantities there.
Would you show how the parents are going to get in again?
Sure. Well, we still need to work with the Department of Transportation as to exactly how this intersection is designed. But, fortunately, Park Street is wide enough that if we say want a turning lane or what's called the deceleration lane, if you're coming from the north to make a right turn in, you're coming from the south, making a left turn in, we might have a left-turn lane. As to whether it's signalized and what kind of signal, that's still to be determined. We certainly want a crosswalk for pedestrians as well, so there's at least that kind of a crossing light as a minimum. But, like we say, there's still discussion there. So, parents driving would arrive here from either side, come in and if they're dropping off, they would drive around, here's the front door, you know, our front door here. They would drop off and kids would enter the building. If they're bringing a kindergarten kid, we may actually dedicate some parking here for those parents who want to park and walk their kid in. And it may be that we think about having direct entrances into those kindergarten rooms so those kids don't even go through the main entrance, they go directly to their classroom, that's a possibility.
But, that's the parking area where the staff is going to park as well?
Yeah, the staff is parked here as well. If someone's parking, there'd be visitor parking spaces here that they would park. But, if they're just, you know, live drop-off, this is, there'd be no parking along this route at arrival time and at dismissal time. If you're coming on bus, you'd come in here and the buses would drop off here, again, right near the front door, turn around and leave. If you're coming otherwise by bike, we don't show a bike lane. And one of the challenges here is trying to keep this entrance driveway as narrow as reasonable because it is crossing wetlands and we probably do want one lane coming in and two lanes going out so that there's a dedicated left-turn lane. So, you know, we're showing three lanes there, plus the sidewalk. To add a bike lane would be another, you know, at least six or eight feet wide. We want to be careful about the width of this. So, we're not sure yet whether we'd have a dedicated bike lane or not there, or whether it's a shared lane, something like that.
Can I just have a question about parking?
Yes, ma'am.
So, 100 spots, including staff, so if there's an event during the day at the school, we already overflow down and around and back to Ash Park. No, I just live it, I've lived it. So, my question...
We had this conversation this morning.
Okay, well, I wasn't abreast of that.
So, we're actually revisiting as to whether 100 is the right number or not. We want to make sure that we have in this, let's call it the striped, you know, permanent spaces, that we have enough for the daily activities. We do have, you know, because of the layout, you know, we have some long driveways that would be wide enough that you could parallel park along for events, especially evening events, so that we can increase the capacity without increasing the amount of pavement, which is always nice to do.
Right. My question is just if we augment to 500, from where we are already, that already has a spillover. Even with the extra parallel parking somewhat on the side, we don't have that spillover into the streets that we have at...
Melissa, yeah, so what we talked about today earlier is Jake and I are going to provide some numbers for how many staff would be in both scenarios and then what kind of traffic would be, you know, for the different kinds of events that the school would have. So, once we provide those numbers, then they'll alter the parking spaces as needed. So, this is preliminary.
Okay. I also know that when they did do the study, I did speak to someone doing the study because I was parked and I said, "Make sure you hit Ash Park Drive" because that is where people are parked and where I parked many times. So, and I think they did, they did go, or they were trying to, I'm not quite sure if they, I can check that box. But, you know, I'm glad it's on the radar, but there definitely is more than just the staff. It's truly bumping that up to five to double.
The other thing we should point out on this too is we are considering the, what's called the southern end of Fano Drive as the emergency or second way out of the site too. It connects to Sumner at that end. And that is partly because, I don't know if we have the whole survey, trying to go to the north or using that property, again, is, involves crossing wetlands. And so, we prefer to stay on the, you know, the Fano Drive which connects to Sumner because they're all wetlands up here. Even though the property does have frontage on that street, it's difficult to get there. And it also sort of bisects the future undeveloped land that...
It's wetlands watershed and flood plain.
Yeah.
Not on that end though.
No, no, it is, it is right there, so I'm on that street.
Do you have a diagram of how many acres are undeveloped?
No, no, I'm talking on, off of...
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, that definitely is. And much more substantial than I think we thought at the beginning.
It is, yeah. Originally on the GIS information, it was a break-in in this stretch of wetlands that doesn't show up in when our wetland scientists went out there and flagged. They flagged this entire boundary and then the surveyor picked it up and likewise here and here. So, all of those are very recent. They haven't been blessed yet by the Conservation Commission, that's sort of a next step for us. But, we did want to share this with you too to show, you know, the entire property and how much the school development's taking and how much is left for future, you know. And we think that's prudent just from an environmental impact point of view. We, you know, we want to keep it as compact and sensitive as possible, but it also, you know, may have functional use in the future. This road as a boundary to the field could also be accessed to that in addition to Fano Drive being accessed. So, this is about nine acres of land, a reasonable piece of property out of the total. And that's not counting the wetlands, that's nine acres that are developable there.
Carl, can I, by the way, thank you for doing that, I'd never expected you'd find nine acres. So, that was fantastic.
Well, it does depend somewhat on how big that athletic field is.
Yeah, true. I had a couple of quick questions and I swear I'll be quick. One was for you two, what's your average stack of cars at 2:20 PM?
Oh, gosh.
Number, number-wise, 50?
Oh, no, more than that, no.
The study was done for the Saferoots to school project, I'm sure we can get the numbers. Oh, sorry, yeah, the study was done for Saferoots to school not too long ago.
Yeah.
So, the numbers exist and they're much more obvious at the Wilkins than they are at the South because it is a very linear and you can count them, the South are just all over.
I mean, I think we have, we have well over 100 cars on property.
Well, now I'm counting that as 200.
Easily, I mean, if not more than that. And that's just with the parent pickup and that doesn't count the staff that are trying to come and go and days that we have professional development when there are parent cars plus teachers coming in, I mean...
This is kind of where I was leaning is that I'm looking here and I'm wondering whether the car stack will go out on Route 27. But, I mean, that's all traffic study stuff anyway.
Calculate.
Yeah. But, my, leads into my other question is I was thinking how, Jake, you may weigh in on this too, but I don't know where the majority of your, outside of Melissa, where the majority of your parents and schoolkids come from to the South School. My guess is to get, let me stop. I thought this was a great design and I thought the, I thought it was very thoughtful and the road, the road circulation pattern was fantastic. We're limited by what we can do with the site for a number of reasons, but my concern is, leading where I was going with Jake, is that there's probably two left turns across traffic to get across Route 27 traffic to get into the school for the majority of South School parents now. One coming down Ash and then one from Park Street into the school.
If you go that way, unless you went down Sumner, Route Sumner and then went that way, then you're talking about rights instead.
And then you're going towards the Sumner town down.
But, that's okay until you actually pass that into the center. I mean, the other thing to factor in, depending on, if you went with the larger option and you were cutting differently, right, I'm thinking about the maps of how distribution. I actually might think you might get more people taking the bus depending on, potentially. So, I think that's a fact, like we don't, I don't know how you quantify that.
These are questions that I should bring up in working group, but I missed it.
Could during certain hours of the day be a one-way? Like in the morning coming in this way and go out the other way? I mean, some of the streets are really not that far off of where the people are coming if they're coming off of there.
Yeah, we're not sure that...
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're not being... I'll apologize, I just led off on a tangent. I just, that was what came to mind right now as we're thinking, the two left turns primarily.
Yeah, if people live south of the site, kind of where the South School is now, they have to take a left turn to get on to Park Street and a left turn to get into the site. But, the way some of those district maps were drawn, they were, some of the neighborhoods were more from the Gibbons side or...
Well, that would be okay.
Or Dawson Side, I'm sorry, a south of Parks, east of Park.
I got there from my stacking question too. I'm thinking if you're coming from that direction, where do you stack to?
Yeah, that's...
I think we have, we're bifurcated too and that you have a whole group coming from Turnpike that has no sidewalks. That's scary right now. So, I don't know again which, how that would break out. So, it's a right onto, on Central Street.
We can get the opinion of our traffic engineer.
Yeah, I'm jumping way ahead.
And maybe as someone mentioned, that people learn to go the other way around, to go clockwise so that they're coming south on Park Street because that is wide enough that you could if you had to queue up along there in the sort of breakdown lane, I guess.
I would be interested, I don't know if you're able to do this, like, I appreciate seeing the South's field on that field, right? So, that gives me like context for how actually, because this like, I went out and walked this with Joyce and like I still have no idea where we were. So, I mean, it'd be interesting to see, just maybe for next time, like, if you can superimpose the Wilkins and the South's current lane length onto what's here. Because that'll give me an idea. Because if you could fit like five or six South lengths of like how far they're actually stacking up, I would feel a lot better knowing that like you can actually accommodate 200. I don't even know what the number is, however many cars before you spill out onto the street.
We can certainly do that.
That would be interesting just to see, you know? Because we have the same problem in terms of dismissal, right? I mean, arrival's less of a problem than dismissal because dismissal starts earlier and then it starts to wrap around.
Right, right.
You guys end up hanging out on...
Yes, don't go down Central Street from 230.
So, I, I want to keep Carl on track too because he's, I mean, more than anything, we're looking at a preferred option for the school building.
We had a whole nother phase of schematic design to refine things.
I just, I apologize, that took us off-guard. But, genuine concerns that we do have to weed through, as you knew before we ever asked, so, carry on, sorry.
Just wanted to, Carl, but just so people understand, the way I understood, and I'm probably wrong, is that when the cars come in, it's because we're building that road wide enough that you could have queuing side by each going, they're not one behind the other, the cars, right?
On this, on these roads?
Yeah.
Well, typically, that's an operational, the road is wide enough for two lanes because we wanted to use it, as we said, for event parking where you could parallel park and still have a drive lane.
So, for pickup and drop-off.
But, if you wanted to maximize...
It's tough to cross actively, yeah.
Having like...
I know, but I did two elementary schools in New Bedford.
We don't typically encourage that because it's dangerous.
But, it can be done, you just have to, you have to have people out there.
But, we tried at the middle school and the parents and the kids don't exactly know where they're supposed to go.
Yeah, we can put together a, you know, a queuing stat of what it actually is with this plan.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in some schools that are desperate like...
Instead of having people do this, they have people do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Literally, to make it as long as possible.
Yes, the Gibbons parking lot is dangerous because people just back right out.
And you obviously have no one moving in the parking lot there. They have to stay and, right, yeah. But, we can talk about those options.
Yeah.
I mean, I can think though, however, however we tell the people they're going to be traveling in their car, whatever route we tell them to take, they will learn how to do it. And I only say that from someone who's had to go through many changes in traffic pattern. I mean, there's some natural growing pains, but really within a few weeks, people have it now. So, I think whatever way we decide, that's the way that people will be trained and it will be fine.
Okay.
The lines that goes around the building, does that connect to the parking?
Well, it's a fire lane from about this point to this point. So, it typically would have like a curb that you have to kind of jump, you know, that's slope. Again, that's kind of a drastic move and it doesn't connect well.
No, I know, but look at all the cars.
We talked about, again, that being overflow parking as well since you got...
Can you imagine being a parent at the far end?
The ends of the wings here.
Can I say something?
Oh, please, sorry, Catherine.
Armando.
Well, I was wondering if it's possible to just...
Well, I was wondering if it's possible to just move the soccer field to the far side where there's potential for future soccer field and just use that space as additional parking and then if needed in the future.
We can certainly add pavement. We're trying to be as economical with the pavement as we can.
We are looking at that too.
Right, but we understand, yeah.
Yeah, parking is always a problem. Even if the high school would promise plenty of parking, it's a problem when we have big events like parents, teacher night and, no, you can never have enough parking.
We actually talked about the fields being over, used as overflow parking for those special events.
If we have a gravel pathway here, that perhaps overflow parking could happen, you know, once a year or something on, on the grass field. It won't kill it. Colleges do it all the time for commencement and.
I feel that we're pouring money into maintenance of those fields and they're being utilized by the public. I get very nervous about, and I don't, I mean, I'm just saying it because I know it's probably what you're thinking.
Only old money.
Carl, so I want to make sure that you're at a natural breakpoint that we can go into full.
I think we are.
Because then I wanted to kick it over to Catherine and the school committee to ask what, because we freestyle it on our.
Yeah, yeah. Lindsay, Armando, you have any other questions?
No, nothing.
All right, Armando, any other questions?
Sorry, can you hear us?
Any other questions or comments about the preferred design, the pinwheel design, initial plans?
No, the pinwheel's the way to go. In my opinion, I mean, I think it's clear from the lessons plan and what we've heard from the principals about that's the way. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go against the educators on this one. I agree with the pinwheel.
Thank you.
So TJ, I don't know if you want to take a vote, you know, just to make it official in our minutes?
Yeah, I think we should. But I want to make sure we're exhausted all, we've exhausted all questions before. Anybody else on the building committee have anything else outside of site plan questions that we still have to address? Just on the pinwheel design as the preferred option? No? Diane, please, yeah.
And I, I'm sorry, and I.
No, no.
This is, this is.
Microphone.
This is more for Jake and Katie. When you pointed out the entrance, okay, is it going to have the same thing that we're now putting at the Dahr and the Gibbons, the double entrance way to go in?
Yes, yes.
And is there enough room for offices for you guys there?
Where?
What, at the entrance when you go in? Is there enough for your office, your secretary's or any nurse?
Oh, yeah, the whole aqua section.
Oh, that whole aqua, oh, I thought that was spit.
This is the entrance and that's the sort of vestibule lock that works.
It was the same color as the spit flush.
There is some, as we said, there's some opportunity for administrative space on upper floors too. People who may have roles that don't necessarily interact with visitors as much or so, so forth.
Okay, so this is still the pinwheel design as the preferred option, irrespective, irrespective, regardless of whether it's consolidated or individual. Correct on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So if anybody has any other comments, please feel free to pipe in now. And Heidi, you online, don't want to forget about you. If not, is there a motion to accept the pinwheel design as the preferred option? New construction option?
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay. All right, motion's made in second. Any other discussion from anyone? And I include the school committee on that. We're taking the vote, but the school committee, please feel free to chime in also.
I just want to let you know, I thought I saw Dr. Baez to jump in, but I think he's disconnected again.
Okay. Hearing no one, all in favor, say aye.
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 And Heidi online, that was an aye.
Yeah.
And we have, we have nobody else online who's come in later? Tom, you just saw Joe and he's in and out, right?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure for open meeting.
Yeah, he's in Portugal, so the connection was that good.
Really?
Yeah, it's dessert time.
Yeah.
Great, so to the school committee, I guess you can see that as our recommendation to you that the pinwheel plan is the preferred option and now we work out all the nuts and bolts for a preferred schematic, I guess.
Thank you very much.
Well, actually.
For the schematic design.
Yeah, schematic design.
Okay.
So with that, do we move on to site survey, site survey review or?
Yeah, we just quickly want to just point out, I don't know if you can see that all, but you know, we now have the complete topo survey here. No major surprises. We just wanted to mention now that we have this too and have the approximate location of the building, we're going to do a bit more subsurface investigation with geotechnical engineers so that we, we know that, you know, there's some rock outcroppings in various places and it will just help us understand the soil conditions there, both for cost reasons, for drainage calculations and so forth. So that's underway. Like we mentioned, we now, you know, know the limits of the wetlands, at least as our consultant saw it. One of the next steps that, we're not necessarily looking for a vote tonight or a recommendation on, but one of the steps that sometimes happens is we take this survey just as is, without the building on it, without anything on it, and present it to the Conservation Commission to get them to agree to the lines. They will go on a site visit, they'll have a public hearing and they can vote yes. You know, sometimes they say, could you move this flag, you know, five feet this way, move that flag 10 feet this way and fine tune things, but it helps us going forward to know that it won't change once they agree to it and our designers and engineers can then work with that. So that would be a next step that we might think about, say, in September or October to submit that to the Conservation Commission. But otherwise, you know, we pointed out the advantages of Fano Drive. One of the other advantages, not just the configuration, but the utilities. There's already some stub lines in there. There's a water line, there's a sewer line, a drain line there and a curb cut. And again, we, I think we talked about this, if we were to introduce a second curb cut on the town's property there, the state highway folks may not allow that. It's too close to the other one and you'd have, you know, conflicting turns, you know, somebody making a left turn, crashes in the Sumner and making a right turn because they're so close to each other. And typically it's not recommended, so another reason to pursue, you know, utilizing the Fano Drive right away as the, as the entrance to the school. Not to mention there's a billboard here. If our entrance are right here, there could be some confusion as to what this is. There's also a power pole right there too, which would have to be moved right at the center of the town's frontage. So for a number of reasons, it makes sense. We just wanted to point that out. In that stream, this is the wetlands here. The water is sort of flowing this way, so there already is a pipe under this right away, which is nice that that's already there. That actually sort of created the start of an intermittent stream, just because it took this water and concentrated it. So it sort of makes it an intermittent stream. That's another thing that we could clarify with the Conservation Commission in advance because that stream has boundaries on it about, in Massachusetts, rivers and streams, at least, you know, permanent ones are protected. There's a 100-foot boundary and a 200-foot boundary and in that first 100 feet, you're not supposed to develop any, have any new development. If it's already developed, you know, that's one thing, but, so we, you know, would want to nail that down too with conservation in advance.
And those lines do come over into our developed area.
Yeah, that's a 200-foot one, that's a 100-foot one. And it's measured from, you know, the start of the stream, I think right about here where that pipe crosses and then 100 and 200 feet away. So those are the site survey issues that we wanted to bring up. TJ, nothing more than that.
Let me just say, the Fano, I just wanted to say this more for the people at home than in this room because I think everybody in this room knows, we haven't actually worked out any formal agreements for Fano Drive, but that's in progress and hopefully we will be able to. I just don't want anybody watching and saying that we haven't taken steps that we need to take. So having said that, any other questions on the site survey?
TJ, who owns all of them?
It's an LLC, Distefano family, LLC.
Yeah.
I want to go back, Carl, just half a step. This isn't as much a question or a comment, but it's again for the people watching at home and the, and people who have maybe chiming in for the first time ever, if not a while. This building committee just selected as a preferred option, a new construction option that we call the pinwheel. That was a product of a full year of analysis, which included just repairing what we had. It included an addition renovation on what we have. It included any number of small, compact, larger or differently configured new construction options. It considered site conditions, it considered education plan of course, it considered cost as much as anything at all. And I want people, when they, if they're chiming in and looking at things and they're saying we just leapt to a, leapt or leapt, leapt to a conclusion, I'm just very mindful of people coming in out of context and not understanding all the work that went in to get to that, what was a two-minute vote. A lot of work, a lot of analysis, any number of matrices, I know that's a word.
Community input.
And community input. There will be more community input. A lot of the things you heard, even from members of the committee asking questions, are still to be decided and worked out. What we did is we took a building plan based on an educational program that was put together by our two principals, two very impressive people, by the way, who I've just got to know over the last year. Appreciate their work and I'm thankful that they're working in the town of Stoughton. We put that educational plan into a building plan and we tried to tailor a building plan best to what our educational professionals, along with their consultants that worked with them, said was a 21st century education best for the town of Stoughton. Anybody else feel free to chime in. I just wanted to be, it's important as we go along and this is a lesson learned the hard way in the, on the high school project also, is that people, people will catch up at different points and they'll inject themselves at different points and they'll wonder how we got from point A to point B. That's how we got there. And I, I was mindful of that as we moved on very quickly from a very brief vote on a design to something like survey, which is a very dry and boring topic. A lot of, lot of effort went into that decision, including cost. And cost, as we'll be able to show, the, the design that we voted on will be supported by construction estimates, a number of them, at least three that I can think of, if not more, provided by both DRA and Vertex, that will show it will also be the most cost-effective solution to what we're trying to do. Having said that, we can move on unless anybody else has anything else to say. Anybody? Great. I blathered enough. Catherine, school committee, we have something to do with you. Dom, want to?
Well, I just, I put it on as an agenda item because, and you brought it up this morning, Catherine, that the scheduled meeting is July 26th and not the 25th. We will be there, Vertex and DRA, to present from what happened at the community forum on the 19th, so. And that just leads into, I can talk about, the communication for the community forum is going out, it's in the town crier. We are sending mailers out to every mailbox in the town of Stoughton for this event. We have flyers. I'll be hanging banners by Friday at a couple of locations throughout the town. And I think we've hit it all. Hopefully we get a good response. Childcare is available. I talked to Principal Miller. I believe she has 10 students. She's going to confirm that with me, but there is childcare there for the event, so. Once again, as Courtney put it up, it'll be next Wednesday, the 19th at 6 o'clock.
It is on the sign in front of the high school.
Oh, she's already put it up? Good.
Yeah, so just confirming for the public, the community forum, open to the public. In fact, we invite as many people from the public to come to that, is Wednesday, July 19th at 6:00 PM at the high school. There's going to be a remote option as well for that. The school committee vote on the 26th, that's another Wednesday, will be at 7:00 PM. That will be here at the district offices. That is a public meeting that is open to the public. SMAC will broadcast that as well. We won't have childcare available at that, sorry. That is primarily a vote on the enrollment. The building committee will be giving an update at that, but that is primarily the school committee's vote on, do we just consolidate from 5 to 4, choose that 5:15 enrollment, that larger enrollment, or do we simply replace the South School with a smaller enrollment, the 2:25?
We should point out too, it is available remote to the public meeting, although we encourage people to come in person, but if it's more convenient or if you're out of town and can hook in, we can even take questions, although it's not directly, we'll record the question and make sure that.
You'll need to register.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah. So.
Great, communication outreach.
That's what I was just talking about.
Any.
About the flyers too? We get some flyers. Yep, I said flyers.
That's what we're doing now. You morphed into that without telling me, Dom.
No, I said, following that's, that agenda item, it goes right into communication and outreach, so I talked about the outreach.
Wink at me so I know that.
Any questions from the school committee about the upcoming meetings, public forum, or the communication outreach or any comments on that?
No questions, but I just really appreciate how much effort this committee's put into getting public input and hosting this event, so thank you.
Armando, any questions or comments?
No, believe it or not, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Dom?
No, I think we can go right into new business if there's any.
Great, new business? Nothing? All right. She's so anticlimactic now.
I know.
Sarah, Catherine, anything else from you and your committee?
Not that I know of. Armando, Lindsay, anything? All right.
All right, if there's nothing else, our next meeting for the building committee at least will be on August 9th. Is that correct, Dom? Yeah?
Yes.
And that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All those in favor of adjourning the high school, excuse me, the South Elementary School Building Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Great. Catherine?
All right, the school committee, all in favor, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the school committee meeting?
Do I have a second, Armando?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's got to be the toughest thing in the world, chairing a, chairing a meeting next to me who's a scatterbrain, chairing a meeting.
Thank you.
So Catherine, I'll try to capture in the minutes, but I'm not sure how you break.